Hi.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Doing good.
So everybody who wants to speak tonight is fill out the yellow paper and sign the signature, right?
Yeah, she's out of town, she left midday, she goes to the dorm room at night. Hey Dave, are you presenting?
Yeah.
You want to hit that picture?
Thank you.
Hello, Alamo Heights.
So I get to see him all the time. Uh, her, uh, service husband got a job here and then thinking maybe he could start here and they were like, actually we need you now. So it's really a big mess. She's on the tour day later, she's going back. Right now they're at our house. In two weeks, I'm not there. Oh, I love it. I'm just worried about her. She's like, I'm like, honey, we can figure out this stuff. She's like, ah.
Um, she is. Alicia's, uh, Carrie's coming in.
Oh, okay.
I'm waiting on all this. All right, good evening, everyone. If I could have your attention, please, it's six o'clock on the dot, April twentieth, twenty twenty-three, and this is a duly filed and posted regular meeting of the Alamo Heights Board of Trustees. Uh, thank y'all all for being here this evening. I'd like to welcome anyone listening on our live streaming broadcast. If anyone would like a recording of this meeting, we'll also be posting it on a link on the district website within twenty-four hours after the end of this meeting. In addition, we'll also post the materials being presented within twenty-four hours. Thank you. Sorry, Clay, I didn't wait for you.
I'm good.
Uh, so you can review a copy of those materials as well. These can be found under the school board icon at our AHISD.net website. If anyone in the audience would like to address the board this evening, uh, we always welcome your input during our citizens to be heard item on the agenda. We ask that you please fill out the yellow form by the door, read the instructions and indicate the agenda item if there is one, so that we can introduce you at the appropriate time. Uh, Brian, just want to confirm.
Everyone?
Got the yellow sheets, everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, with that, I want to move on to section two of our agenda, uh, delegations and recognitions, and hand it over to Dr. Frank Alforo.
Thank you, Mr. Hamlin. I'm excited to see such a big crowd for our first recognition tonight. Uh, we have an award that we give out every month to an employee called a Spotlight on Excellence, and it's designed to shine the spotlight on someone who often works behind the scenes, often unnoticed, uh, to fuel our tradition of excellence. And so today I'd like to call up our assistant custodial supervisor, Xavier, come on up, Xavier, come on up. Now, uh, everyone in the district knows him as Xavier, but in Espanol, in Panama, uh, I said pronuncia Xavier. So it's Xavier Fenes, and Xavier's been with since, uh, twenty fifteen?
I just.
Yeah, yeah, twenty fifteen, and he is the assistant custodial supervisor. The head custodial back there, supervisor over there is Jerry, and of course, our director is David Ramirez, here to celebrate him, and all of the people in the back waving this if you're here. They're all his colleagues. Okay, yeah, come just do that. Um, and everybody's here to celebrate Xavier, as well as his wife, Stephanie, who, go ahead, yes, clap for her. Stephanie's an Alamo Heights, uh, graduate.
Taught by Dr. Beshara.
At any rate, so enough about him. He truly is a spotlight behind the scenes, uh, working with all of the staff. We put on so many events, and you often take for granted the setup for events, like tonight. We don't just randomly have chairs hanging out there all the time. There's lots of background work that goes into every big event we had. We have the celebration of learning we had, uh, a few weeks ago, they set all that up. Everything you can think of, we had, um, the strings event, uh, last week, everything you can think of, all of our team is working hard behind the scenes, and Xavier is a, uh, integral to that. He's very calm, he's collected, he always is, yep, we'll do it. Um, and I know it's a lot of work, and, uh, you guys are all great to do it, and I appreciate you spearheading it all. Uh, in addition to that, he's just a great guy. And although every campus throughout the district is, was excited to talk about nominating him for a spotlight on excellence. And so if you'd like, this, you can say anything if you want.
I just wanted, uh, to say, uh, this recognition represents all Plan Services and my team, uh, custodial, thank you so much. Yes, thank you.
Congratulations. Now, I'd like to, let's get the whole team up here, and let's take a picture, okay? So David, Jerry, yeah, let's get a picture of us first, obviously. Appreciate all of you all coming out to support Xavier. Mr. Fenes, Mr. Fenes. Don't be shy, don't be shy.
No, you get in it too.
Dana, get in it. Let's make sure Dana's in there. I'm gonna make space, I'm gonna make space. I was ready in one.
Nope, let's get down this way.
We need you to be in the center.
Yeah, put him in the middle.
Yeah, we want to get you in the center.
Is Jimmy the official one?
All right, all right, looking that way. All right, so, uh, trustees right here, just know you're in the picture. Go, your faces. All right, ready? One, two, three, one, two. I'm gonna take another like this. All right? Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
Will you send that to Julian?
I will. Got it. Thank you. Yes.
Frank, come Frank, bring the background.
All right, y'all, good evening.
Thank y'all again.
Well, our, our final recognition tonight is our, uh, monthly update from the high school student council. Dylan, let us know what's going on.
Well, you know, before I get started, I just wanted to say how cool it was to have our custodial staff here. I know, you know, whenever I'm having a bad day, not just me, anyone, and just how incredibly positive and the overwhelming just love that our entire custodial staffs, like, shows us as students, just, they show up for us when we need us, and sometimes it's just a smile or holding the door for us, but, um, we all appreciate them so much, and they, they work so hard. Um, so I thought it was really cool that they were able to be here today. Um, on a student council note, uh, I will say we have some exciting stuff going on. Tomorrow, bright and early, five AM, um, we leave the high school for a student, for Dallas, we're gonna have a student council state conference, um, so there's gonna be some exciting stuff going on there. Um, I'll be giving a presentation on, uh, it's a great day to be kind, and about ways to promote kindness and character education in schools, um, and I think it's gonna be good. We're taking about six people, um, plus Dylan and Rangel, so I think we're all gonna get a chance to really learn. Um, I mean, me, I'm just, you know, going to go, but we're taking some freshmen and sophomores who are really gonna learn and soak that up, and I'm hoping they'll bring some really cool ideas, um, back to campus. Other exciting things we have going on is our talent show. This year's theme, Mules Got Talent, MGT, like A-G-T, MGT, uh-huh, uh-huh, I think you. So we're gonna have judges, and we're gonna have like the big red buzzer and the X that lights up, it's, 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 we're gonna go all out, let me tell you. So I'm excited, um, I know that we're going to be working really hard on that one, um, but other than that, I mean, we're just making sure, um, you know, things are going good. We have First Friday come up, it's gonna be a Cinco de Mayo First Friday, so we're gonna get mariachis, and we're gonna have raspas, and we're going to have a whole bunch of different fun activities, um, that will be, um, there to promote kindness for that First Friday. It'll be our last First Friday, too. Um, so a lot of exciting stuff going on over at the high school. That's it.
So Dylan, before you sit down, we appreciate you, last two years of service as student council president. We're gonna miss you next year, but Trinity is looking to get you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Alforo. With that, we'll move into section three, citizens to be heard. We have received sixteen requests to speak on public comment about an item that is not on the agenda. In order to facilitate an orderly meeting and respect all participants' time and in the interest of conducting an efficient meeting, any group of three or more persons signing up to speak on the same topic that is not on the agenda shall appoint one person to present the group's views to the board, and will be limited to three minutes. Uh, each of you will have three minutes to speak. Alicia will hold up a card when there's one minute left, as she's showing right now, and another card when your time is up. In making your presentation, we ask that you do not refer to individual students or personnel by name or position. Especially in a public setting, it's best to be careful with comments about specific people. In addition, by state law, the board is not allowed to respond to your comments, but we always welcome and appreciate your input as important members of our community. With that, and I'm gonna say upfront, I forgot my readers in my car, so I'm gonna have to ask Dr. Beshara to ask, help me with some names, um, if you could. Okay, we're gonna start with Keegan Ferenza? Ferenza, okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Do you want to come sit at the table?
Uh, we're, yeah, sit at the front of the table? Or stand, sit, yeah.
Hello, my name is Keegan Ferenza, and I'm a sophomore at Trinity University. I'm thankful to have the opportunity to speak to y'all today, and I'd like to thank the members of the board for their time and their continued commitment to Alamo Heights. Today, I would like to remind y'all about the importance of two different points. The first being the importance of practicing anti-racism policy. The students and faculty of Alamo Heights need to be made aware that simply not being racist isn't enough. Everyone needs to be actively working against racism and finding new and innovative ways to create awareness around these issues. If racism is simply avoided, and people continue to claim that they simply do not see color, then the work of the people who came before us will be for nothing, and the future of tomorrow will be uncertain. Practicing anti-racism will improve the overall quality of learning and allow students to have the space they need to learn. Minority students will feel safer when attending school, and it will be because of the conscious effort made by their peers, teachers, and principals. This kind of change is not performative, and will require continued dedication from all members of the district. The second issue I'd like to discuss is how racism can often lead to forms of aggression and bullying. I believe it is important to note the violent effect racism has on people. There needs to be more awareness around issues of racial harassment in Alamo Heights schools and a larger effort to confront difficult topics surrounding issues of race. The victims of these terrible aggressions might suffer academically, mentally, and even physically. Providing students with a safe environment will help to remedy these aggressions. The futures and the lives of these students are in your hands. If the, if these goals are accomplished, the achievement capital lesson, graduation rates will rise, and students will have more opportunities. Thank you.
Okay, second tonight, we hope, we'll hear from Gabriella McGaddams.
Alamo Heights is a good school district and has a lot of resources, but they seriously need to work on their school culture of discrimination, racism, and ignorant administration. Twenty twenty niche review, three stars. Even with a student body of under fifteen hundred, more than seventy percent is white, and it is very apparent who leads who in this district. There's a huge disparity between LGBTQ plus, Hispanics, African American, in essence, between minority groups and the white Christian community. Twenty twenty-three niche review, four stars. Hello, my name is Gabriella, and I'm here as a college student and resident living in the Alamo Heights community, and I felt it important to come and be an additional voice of accountability to the school board and district as a whole. I want to continue echoing years of complaints of discrimination and harassment from students and parents, which somehow continues to go unprioritized. As a white majority area nestled in a minority majority city, this places the board administrators and educators in a position to go the extra mile to protect marginalized students. Alamo Heights is praised for many levels for academic achievement and boasts some of the highest education ranks in Texas for categories like graduation rates, college readiness, and choice of educational programs. Unfortunately, this district also carries an infamous reputation for large amounts of hate, discrimination, and bullying. This carries on into twenty twenty-three, where my peers and friends who have attended Alamo Heights, especially at the high school level, tell me that they sacrificed their mental health and self-esteem by staying in this district for the sake of their academic futures. I've also heard from those who have left the district as they recount blatant ignorance from administration almost as often as students. The voices of current and former students over the span of years who explicitly state their fears of safety under this district's policies and actions should be repeated over and over, and should weigh on the minds of every community member who all have the power to do better. Like many districts in the country, there is a trend of implementing half-baked solutions in the wake of discriminatory allegations. I implore the board to revisit some of these programs, like Vision Twenty Twenty and the Diversity Equity Council, and strategize beyond the desires of some donors who may prefer a neutral stance on perceived controversial issues such as basic student inclusivity. In the words of a community member, "We created a culture of entitlement where there is no empathy. These kids have never had empathy fostered." The first step to changing the reputation of hatred and elitism in Alamo Heights is accepting that there was and is an issue of ignorance in regards to dire social issues that are affecting the most disadvantaged students. Inclusion and equity are not just media buzzwords, as they have been deployed in political debate. They work to address real feelings and struggles of excluded populations that the majority is rarely forced to consider. Improving equity means little if those at the top of the hierarchy do not truly believe in or understand the fight for equity themselves. So, in addition to all the shiny new facility renovations that are in the works, I encourage the board to put just as much effort into pushing everyone, including themselves, admin, and parents, to take real action towards educating one another and fostering an environment of empathy, because it is owed to these pain students and families, both past and present. Encouraging a thoughtful and open mind to other life perspectives amongst the community is an effort that is needed to produce visible school improvement for every child who is confronted with an academic society choice. Respect for peers, or quality education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGaddams. Uh, next, Caleb Jenkins.
Hi, how are y'all? Uh, thank you for allowing me to speak today. Um, so I am Caleb Jenkins, a high school graduate and soon to be college graduate of Trinity University. Um, I currently am here on behalf of Trinity University, and, uh, all year in my School in America class, we've been learning about the school board system, and after doing some research on Alamo Heights ISD, I found that your website lays out the demographics of the student population. I'm sure you are all well aware, um, but to bring to your attention fifty-one point three percent white, forty-one point one percent Hispanic, two point three percent African American, point one percent Asian, and point four percent Native American. Two point three percent of the student population being African American is worrisome. In your twenty, in your Vision Twenty Twenty strategic goals, under the headline Belonging and Equity goal, it states, "A strong sense of belonging generates feelings of trust, connection, pride, and motivation. Alamo Heights is a community that seeks to bridge our differences." I'm here to argue that having a two point three African American population amongst a majority of white and Hispanic, uh, campus does not create a strong sense of belonging. It goes on furthermore. Furthermore, equity means that each student experiences a deep sense of belonging within our schools, and that not a single student walks our hallways feeling marginalized because of their identities. And so how could the one black kid in the room with his fifteen other non-black classmates not feel marginalized? And, uh, I went to a private school in New Orleans, Louisiana, and I graduated amongst a small class of sixty-four students. Three of the sixty-four students were black. I left the school with a, with a quality education, but reflecting on my time spent there, I had to deal with marginalization almost every day. It was so normalized to the point that I wouldn't even recognize what was going on. Unconsciously, I was in constant competition with my counterparts, counterparts to succeed, keep up, while battling mistreatment. I'm here to testify that San Antonio is a segregated city that has allowed systemic racism to exist and to guide the education of its community. Um, we cannot all be passive observers of this segregation. By doing nothing, we are further legitimizing racial isolation. Gem Core laws are far gone, but they're still alive and prominent in Alamo Heights ISD. The wealth gap between people of color and non-people of color is an economic problem, but finding a solution to that problem starts with education. It is not so much a concern to diversify Alamo Heights, but rather to, rather a call for Alamo Heights to be proactive in that change. Integrated education can benefit all students. Incorporating diversity programs does not benefit these racially isolated black folk, nor does it benefit the white folk in the grand scheme of things, but the future of the nation rests in the hands of San Antonio's board members, who have the ability to bridge the gap between socioeconomic status and education through your active pursuit of rectifying the injustices and inequality caused by systemic racism. Thank you.
Thank you, Caleb. Uh, next, we'll have Catherine Zar.
Good afternoon. My name is Catherine, and I attended AHISD, Cambridge Elementary, and AHAS from twenty fourteen to twenty sixteen. While in sixth grade, I took health at AHAS, where the only thing about sex that the instructor taught us is that we'd be forever unhappy if we did it too early. She drew her own family tree on the board, wrote the age at which certain numbers first had sex, and X-ed out those numbers who had had sex before marriage to show that they were now unhappy in life. Then, once the girls and boys are separated, she told the girls that our virginities were something that we were supposed to gift to our husbands, and that the gift would be ruined if we had sex before, and we wouldn't be able to bond with him, and he would probably divorce us. Never once did she think that we might not marry, that we might not marry a husband. Largely because of this sex education, it took me till my sophomore year of high school to realize that I was gay. Years of wondering why I didn't like boys, years of thinking I was a psychological defect and a monster, because no one had ever bothered to mention that it's possible and normal to like someone who isn't a guy. You were doing worse than failing LGBTQ plus students. You were actually hurting them, causing wounds that for me still haven't healed. By limiting LGBTQ plus people from the sex education, from the health curriculum, and from the curriculum at large, you are telling your LGBTQ plus students that they aren't normal, that they shouldn't exist, and you're also giving their straight peers permission to look down on them. LGBTQ plus youth are four times more likely to attempt suicide than their straight peers. Four times. They experience bullying, they experience harassment, they experience hate, erasure, and dismissal in and out of the classroom, and you have a responsibility to protect them. The next time you look at the sex education curriculum, I'm asking that you look at it through the eyes of your LGBTQ plus students and families. Better yet, ask them, invite them to share their experiences and their recommendations for a more inclusive sex education. Online, you can find free and accessible lesson plans that you can customize to age level and specific topics at Advocates for Youth, called Rights, Respect, Responsibility, that includes lessons on defining sexual orientation and gender identity, training dignity and respect for all people, safe sex practices for LGBTQ plus people, and more. Many would be surprised by how popular such an initiative is. One nationwide survey found that seventy-eight percent of parents support such an education at the middle school level, and even more in the high school level. I would also like to take a moment to advocate on behalf of the ninth grade students fighting queer erasure and censorship, and recognize their strength and courage. You deserve to see yourselves in the curriculum. You, you are beautiful, and loved, and you matter. Thank you for being here. I exist. LGBTQ plus people, we exist. We go to your schools, walk down your hallways, and attend your classes. It's time to stop pretending that we don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Next would be Lee Bullock.
Good evening, um, I'll put these on. So tonight I'm representing forty-five people from the one hundred block of East Dumpview and the neighbors on Vanderoven who have houses that share street access with Alamo Heights High School, and have actually signed a petition in agreement with the things that I'm gonna read. So since fall of twenty twenty, um, we have experienced excessive and frequent noise and lighting disturbances from the new stadium, and heavy and unlawfully fast traffic, trash in our yards, and buses idling and parking in basically people's backyards. We are here this evening to bring these problems to your attention and propose reasonable solutions, which will require the board, the city council, and the police department to collaborate. First, um, the new sound and lighting system was completely ill-suited for this small community. Streets adjacent to the school have endured many evenings of amplified music and yelling and announcing, in which we could hear word for word every play, every name, multiple evenings a week. The placement of the speakers causes a problematic echo heard outside the stadium as well. The jumbotron lights are often left on all night, and the other lights are turned on as early as six AM, causing light to shine into the people's homes when no one is even on the field. An amplified siren sound is often used to signal bulls, and it's loud and repetitive, especially during weekend tournaments. When East Fair Oaks became one way to allow for school parking on the street, residents on the south side of East Dumpview began experiencing an increase of trash flowing into their yards, sometimes from events, but often just from kids dumping their trash after lunch. These neighbors also experienced buses from other schools basically parking in their backyards during events. Well, it's basically their backyard. Oftentimes, with our, and engines are running, so the diesel smells waft into their backyards. Finally, the amount and speed of the traffic, despite the fact that our street is a school zone, has increased as the result of the East Fair Oaks becoming one-way and a lack of monitoring. We're asking for a regular communication between our neighborhood and high school and the high school, so that we can become good neighbors to each other. Please, we want to ensure that the stadium lighting is turned off when there are no events or practices. We ask that the loudness of the stadium noise return to a reasonable level for a neighborhood. We've been there for twenty-two years, so this is really just the first time we're bringing it here. Please disallow the PA system used, to be used during non-UIO events. We ask that the siren sound be reduced, and, uh, if not, meant just taken out. Uh, we ask that their litter at the high school be monitored. We're even suggesting providing community service opportunities, uh, to pick up that trash. And please discontinue the bus parking along the north side of East Fair Oaks. So I hope we can work together on some solutions. Thanks.
Thank you, Lee. Next is Billy Bullock.
She talked for me.
Great. Welcome on. Thank you, Billy. As always, short and concise. Next, we'll have Charlotte Orozco.
My name is Charlie, and I'm a freshman in Advanced ELA, the class that had the Literary Circle unit with the topics of Transformation and World Zen. I was excited to find that various books available for us to choose had representation for the LGBTQ+ community, being that I myself am part of that community. Being gay is something I try to hide. I'd wear knee-high rainbow socks every day of the week if I had enough hair. Yes, I have on hair, and yes, I wear them on. Then I found out that the unit had been put on pause. Unofficial sources are saying that this censorship happened because parents complained about their being LGBTQ+ representation. So, what about me needs to be censored? For our classmates, I exist, and I'm proud of who I am. If a parent is afraid of me and what I represent, I ask why? This is who I am, and I should be able to see myself represented in our curriculum and not have to worry about being erased because of a parent's bigoted views. The sad truth is, when queer youth don't feel accepted at home and at school, this can lead to worsening depression, even suicide. I'd also like to point out that everybody here wearing a yellow dot shows that they're supporting our case. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Lisa Livingston.
I think she spoke for me.
Okay. Next will be Anthony Guerrero.
My name is Anthony, and I have my wife, Melinda. We live at 1604 East Elmview Place. We've been there for a little over 30 years. Our house is located just across from the street from the north end of the football stadium. Over the years, we have seen the completion of some wonderful improvements to the high school. However, we are here this evening to address several recent issues involving the high school that have caused concern. The issues are the loudness of the stadium speakers, the parking of buses along the north side of East Fair Oaks just outside our backyards, the lack of trash cans on the north side of the high school, and the students speeding around the school and on East Elm. We propose the following to address and correct these issues. First, the speaker loudness. Can the volume control be permanently set to a lower decibel level? Can a pool of operators be established to always ensure monitored operation of the volume as followed for all events? Can the position of the speakers be redirected? Of course, football games will be exempt. We need loud to support our mules. Okay, so second is the bus issue. Not allow any buses to park along the north curb of East Fair Oaks. We would prefer an established designated parking location for all buses for all events at all times, perhaps on the east side of the stadium, Vanderhoven. We have had three water leaks in our backyard over the years, and each time a bus was parked with its wheels directly over the water supply line feeding our property. It has resulted in the line coming apart. Also, it is difficult to enjoy our backyard with people looking directly over our fence. We have also experienced derogatory language from visiting schools. Third, there needs to be more trash cans located on the north side of East Fair Oaks of the high school. I have recently counted approximately six to seven trash cans on the south side. I frequently pick up trash left by students outside along my fence. Perhaps make it a daily school announcement informing the students it is against the law to litter, and students caught littering will be held accountable. Maybe starting a litter pickup by school clubs to enhance the appearance of the high school and its surrounding neighborhood. Last, the speeding. Speeding has always been a problem over the years. Again, maybe a daily friendly announcement to students to please adhere to posted speeding limits. It would also help if the Alamo Heights Police monitor the streets surrounding the school in the morning, lunch, after-school, and at all events. We are confident these issues can be addressed and solutions put in place to correct them. We say this based on the fact that over the years, issues have come up before, been addressed, and solutions put in place agreed to by all. Thank you for allowing me to speak regarding our concerns of these issues. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Next, Melinda Guerrero.
Yes, I previously sent an email to all of the board members here, and I wholeheartedly concur with what my husband just said and Miss Lee said. So, I thank you for your time. It's pretty detailed, so I apologize for the length of the email, but it really does point the concerns from the East Elmview neighbors. Thank you so much.
Next, Jenny Hickson.
Good evening. My name is Jenny Hickson. I am the parent of a fifth grader and a ninth grader who are in the ELA class that is having the book curfew. I'm squeezing my kids with my wife and with their dad, so we are an LGBTQ family. I think there's been a lot of back and forth about what happened with this English class. I think what I would like to say is that you have fantastic English teachers in this district who picked amazing books that represented this spectrum of all kids. And what I would encourage you to do is think about the ways that, as a district, we can continue to support our teachers in having the access to the broadest spectrum of literature that our kids need to be able to read about themselves, to read about their peers, to read about their city, reflected in the literature that we have. Good literature should challenge us. It should make us really uncomfortable. I know that all the things that I've really learned in life, I've learned because I felt kind of icky while I was learning them, and they made me feel like I didn't know anything. And that's what, if we're really challenging our kids, they're going to read books that are going to challenge how they see the world. And so, I would encourage you to think about the policies as we move forward in this increasingly political environment around, y'all have all paid attention in the news and what's happening with the legislature. These decisions are being taken out of the hands of local control, and so, as people who are raising our kids, we need to think very carefully about how we support our teachers who know our kids best in presenting the widest array of literature available to them and making sure that all of our programming represents all of our kids. That's why we live in this district, because we believe in the good quality of education that you can provide, and that's what we know that you're going to be committed to providing for our kids. So, thanks very much.
Next, Joey Crimmer.
I think I almost said everything.
Next, Lisa Fox.
Hello, good school board members. Y'all know me, I've been here for two years, reporting you guys for two years. I hope that I have shown y'all respect, learned something from me these last few years. I want to see, to all the students that are here right now, reach out for help. You can look at my Facebook, Lisa Fox, all the school board, work with me, been trying to do this for a long time. So, last week, we had found out the TA had finalized the law that Marine Mollak had worked with the Texas Legislature to get passed to help with the bully prevention. So, what are we going to do now? Are we going to just do the minimum and shove it into committee and just say, hey, we did the minimum, we're doing all we can? Or are we going to do better? Like we always say, we're Alamo Heights, we do better, right? I looked at the committees, all the committees around, I looked at who's in the committees, in the high school, the middle school, Howard, Cambridge, and I noticed that it's basically the same people in the same committees. So, how is that diversity? It's not. All the things that these students have said today are exactly what I've been saying for two years, but they say it a lot better than I have said. The one that stood out for me is, a student has said, "Sacrificing mentality for the education Alamo Heights brings." And that is exactly what I have heard throughout the years. That my six-year-old neighbor that says the same thing, that he experienced with bullying because of minority, these students are saying the same thing. That is ridiculous. I was brought up a Catholic, I go to St. Anthony's Cathedral since I was born. I was brought up to love all and respect all no matter what. It was not my job, it's not my job to judge. It is only God's. I always look for a compromise, but when it comes to the bullying prevention and the reporting, there's no compromise at all. The numbers I gave y'all last month showed you guys that 3% of the students are actually getting reports to the state. So, when 66 students report a bullying incident, only three of those are getting reports to the state, and the other ones are being treated however they want to be treated by the admin. Don't leave this up to the teachers, they already have to worry about shooters. I encourage y'all to pass policy that at least when a student reaches out, however they reach out, internet, admin, teacher, counselor, when they're making the report, the bullying prevention checklist is given to them so that they are educated about what bullying is. Maybe what their experience is not bullying, maybe it is. But at least educate the students in what they're reporting to you guys. That way, everybody is educated and not just you, the adults. Furthermore, I encourage everyone in this room to continue coming every month and speaking on these topics. It takes a long, long time, and I'm sorry, but that's what has to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Anne Daviole.
David.
Oh, my apologies. There you go. See, that's one of the...
Terrible image. I reminded you. Thank you all. Hello. I'm sad to say I haven't been here yet this semester, because normally I teach on Thursday night, so it's good to be back and seeing you all. In a political era when the Texas Legislature is targeting well-known Texans and censorship is rampant across the state and the nation, books have become the latest weapon in the culture wars. Texas leads the nation in bans and challenges as tracked by the National Coalition Against Censorship in Latin America. And teachers are professionals who are credentialed to select books that engage students, meet curriculum standards, and are good fits for their classroom and their community. Families, of course, can discern that some books are better or some are not good for their kids. These are, this is the reality, and books can be very powerful tools for learning and growth, as the previous speaker said. So, given that, the unfolding events centered on the literature circles in ninth grade, there's a political reality, there's a reality of censorship, so it's imperative that the district be attentive to the perception of censorship when making curricular decisions. 350 signatories have a letter requesting more information about the current situation in ninth grade. At the same time, they're voicing a broad support for diverse books in the curriculum from kindergarten through 12th grade. While some voices may want to remove books from the curriculum for all children, those 350-plus people want them in the curriculum, chosen by professional teachers, supported by those same teachers as children engage with the sometimes very challenging content they present. The district has brave systems in place for this. Your policy on book challenges is very robust. It includes that families are allowed to opt their children out of books for themselves only, not for everyone, and it leaves the books in circulation while that challenge is unfolding. That is a brave system. And so, I encourage the district to lean into that system, because that's a lot better than a lot of other places. The key is that those, we don't need a few voices to silence those diverse stories. Those stories need to be in our schools, in our official curriculum, taught by the teachers you have hired and trained to be excellent, to support students in meeting those profile of the learner goals that are aspirational and amazing. It's part of the reason you started with three brilliant alum saying very powerful words from their experience here. And so, I want to thank you all for the continued work of creating these policies, encourage your use of them when they become appropriate, and looking forward to continually working to make this district one where everyone belongs and that it offers exceptional educational opportunities for the diversity it represents. Thank you.
Okay, next, and thank you, Anne, Noor Jalul.
Before I host the committee, I'm a Trinity student, and I'm excited to have Dylan Corso appear next semester, so he's very bright. Dear members of the school board, my name is Noor, and I'm a sociology student at Trinity University. I'm here to express my concern about the recent increase in the security budget for Alamo Heights Independent School District. As you may know, the district spent $250,000 on security in the 2022-23 school year, more than four times what was spent on the security the previous year. At the same time, district cut social worker spending from $57,546 to zero. While I understand the anxiety and unease over gun violence in schools in America, I went to high school in America, I'm still troubled by the implications of the increase in security spending in AHISD. Firstly, the increase in security spending put a strain on the school's budget, and I'm concerned that it may lead to cutbacks in other areas, such as extracurricular activities or classroom resources. Additionally, research shows the increase in policing and security can create a sense of fear and anxiety. This fear and anxiety can have a negative impact on academic performance, according to research published in the Journal of Criminal Justice. Furthermore, according to the Intercultural Development Research Association, or IDRA, as I'll refer to in the rest of my address, an increase in surveillance and security on campus can lead to a breakdown in trust between students and staff. Crime on school grounds has been decreasing nationally. That is why it's concerning that AHISD has increased its security measures, including the addition of more school resource officers, despite little evidence of their effectiveness. There is little research showing a connection between officer presence and crime rates. This is especially concerning considering there's a whopping 346 students for each counselor in this district. That is more than the 250 students to one counselor ratio recommended by the American School Counselor Association and the Texas Education Agency. The district also currently has zero social workers. Schools are seeing less crime. Increasing security increases student psychological well-being and academic achievement. Why then are we spending so much on more SROs, cameras, and bulletproof glass while neglecting tried and true methods of student support, counselors, and social workers? While it is important to take steps to ensure that schools are safe and secure environments for students and staff, it is equally important to be mindful of the potential downsides of overemphasizing security measures. Therefore, I urge the district to consider alternative approaches, such as investing in effective research-based programs that promote safe school climates and redirecting funds spent on policing schools towards productive, culturally sustaining supports. Schools should strive to strike a balance between creating a secure environment and fostering a positive and supportive school culture. Thank you for your attention on this matter.
Okay, last speaker this evening will be Chris Provost.
I'll just, I'll say I agree with what we, as Tony and Melinda said. Hello, I've come to speak to you today because I'm deeply concerned about the safety and well-being of the residents who live on East Elmview Place. My name is Chris Provost. I live on East Elmview with my wife, Jessica, and my two children. We have lived in Alamo Heights for five years. Our house backs up to the Alamo Heights High School parking lot on East Fair Oaks, next to the Alamo Heights Stadium and the Mule Dome. Fortunately, the problems I'm going to mention all have easy solutions. The first problem, which is probably the most important to me, is the heavy and speeding traffic, which has been funneled onto East Elmview Place by the medians on Vanderhoven and East Fair Oaks becoming a one-way street. This has caused heavy and speeding traffic on East Elmview that is unmonitored and extremely unsafe. I have fears every day of my children or someone else's child being struck by a vehicle on East Elmview because of unsafe drivers. This is a school zone, and drivers regularly go 40-plus miles per hour down East Elmview. The easy solution, in my opinion, is to update the school zone markers at each end of the street with digital speed signs that will notify drivers of their speed violations. Even easier solution is park a police vehicle on East Elmview to catch in ticket speeders every day for a month or two to shut it down. Second problem, excessive noise from the speakers of the stadium must be decreased permanently. This is a quality of life issue, and it brings down the property values of the houses on every street surrounding the stadium. I understand the speakers are already in place, but there is a volume knob. There are ways to shut down or quiet each speaker separately. The easy solution is to put a student or staff member in charge of never letting the volume get inappropriately loud. Third problem is the idling buses on East Fair Oaks constantly sending fumes into my backyard and my neighbors, where our children spend a significant portion of their waking hours. There's no reason for any bus to idle on East Fair Oaks when there are three parking lots available around the school. The easy solution is buses should park in the three parking lots around the school, and if any bus must park on East Fair Oaks, then they should be required to turn off the vehicle. Finally, trash blowing into the backyard from the students who park on East Fair Oaks needs to be addressed. I'm continuously picking up trash left by students who park on East Fair Oaks. The easy solution is to start a student program to beautify Alamo Heights High School, which would involve picking up trash around the school, or if that is impossible, use it as a deterrent for students who break the rules. Thank you for taking the time to listen. I truly believe there are solvable solutions to all these problems. My family and I, and many of the citizens who live on East Elmview, we look forward to working with the school and the city council to solve these problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Honestly, I really liked them. I'm thinking maybe it's about time to do a regular... You gonna be in there? Okay.
All right. With that, we're going to move into section four of our agenda items for presentation for possible action. The first being this evening, a presentation on an Alamo Heights High School student trip, Science Department to Costa Rica next July. Our presenter this evening will be Mrs. Lucy Duncan.
Awesome. Thank you so much. So I'm back again. We are planning ahead this time for our trip to Costa Rica. So we are going this summer. We have 22 students and two parents going to Costa Rica in July. So that's it. But I had a lot of good feedback from the students. They were really excited about the trip. And so I wanted to start planning early because I wanted to give students an opportunity to kind of spread out their payments and just open it up to more students that wanted to go. So we're going back to Costa Rica next summer, and the kids are really excited. We're going to have our first meeting, our first parent meeting, next Thursday. And this time, it's pretty much the same itinerary that we're going to do this summer, except we're adding on Port de Gero. And that is really cool because... And we're actually... We're also doing the Carrera Biological Reserve. So those two places are really cool because the students are going to stay inside the jungle. So we actually have to take a boat there. It's not someplace you can access otherwise, and we're going to stay inside the jungle. So what I've heard is that the wildlife is just coming to you. When you're in this jungle house, you're going to see monkeys. Like you open up your window, there's going to be a little monkey there. And we're going to be able to see a lot of the wildlife and biology firsthand. So the kids are going to get a really great experience. And it's longer, so that's kind of nice. So we're going to be able to spend like two days in each place. So that kind of just extends their experience. And I think it's going to be a great trip. So they're also going to see La Fortuna waterfall, but also do all the other kind of suspension bridges, zip lining, all the adventure stuff, and add some more of that biological study. So it's going to be a wonderful trip. It's time for July again, summertime, just to give it that amount of time for the students to be able to enjoy it and learn.
Frank, any questions?
I have a silly question. So I did notice that some of the locations are kind of remote. And it said breakfast and dinner. Like, what are you going to do about lunch? I just know, like...
So lunch, typically, we're going to have like little, like, you know, kind of like booths or eateries.
So there is, yeah, okay. I didn't know if they were just like going to skip lunch because I know like...
Oh, no, no. So there'll be places to get food and breakfast. And that's just kind of because, you know, different people want to eat something different.
Yeah. I just didn't seem like that. It wasn't like the kind of place that you'd go to the food court.
No, no.
So I was going like, what are you going to do about lunch?
There's no McDonald's or anything like that. So they're going to be eating traditional Costa Rican food. So I told them to get excited about that. It's really good. But they're going to definitely have to expand their palate. There. But yeah, it's going to be great.
Well, thank you. Appreciate your comments at the beginning also about payment inclusion and being proactive.
Yes.
Really appreciate that, as always.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next this evening, we'll have a presentation of Alamo Heights High School student trip, Choir Department to Orlando, Florida, again next year.
Awesome. I know we're trying to rush away from the storm, so I won't take the time to pass it out. But I did bring Invitation Store Pop Show, which is on Saturday, the 6th of May. Last year was British Invasion, so this year we're born in the USA. Please take one when we're headed out. Yeah. Very excited for next year's Orlando trip to the theme parks in Orlando and also just a chance to do a workshop with a Disney professional on movies and the soundtrack with movies. I've taken a choir to do that trip before, and that experience is even more so rewarding than singing for a sidewalk full of people who weren't paying attention to you. So as far as choirs go, we don't get a chance to march down Main Street like band does. So doing a workshop where they could get to have their hands on singing in that Disney soundtrack is a really fun experience. I provided the itinerary in the packet, which you can see. We'd be flying. So we would fly out at the O'Dark 30 on the last Friday before spring break and hit a theme park on each day, workshop on one of those days, Universal Studios, and then the Animal Kingdom, and then fly out that evening, arrive home exhausted and ready for a couple of days of spring break before we're headed back. You know, I went to Disney World as a high school singer with my choir and still remember all of it. I've taken choirs to Disney World two times and loved every memory we made there. It's a great trip for kids, and there's so much to do, and they're all right there in the theme parks. It's something we're looking forward to. In talking payment schedule, the one in your packet talks about how they pay in 2021. So that did not occur. That's just a copy and paste error from a previous trip that I edited everything for about the year. In talking with our tour company, they've opened up our online payments already. So our parents can start paying as they sign up before the summer, but those payments will be broken down in August, September, October, November, December, January, broken down there. Fundraising, we would do two different styles of fundraiser, a coffee and Tumblr sales just to support the choir that would help the students who are traveling pay for their own trip. So if they worked really hard towards that, they'd be able to fundraise a huge portion of their trip. And then also a general fundraiser where our choir plans to sell virtual Christmas carols in November, December, a chance for family out of town to receive, to help support the choir with just a little chip in, and then they get a personalized video Christmas carol. It's been really successful for some colleagues, so yeah, we're looking forward to it. I'm happy to entertain questions.
The coffee Tumblr?
Coffee and Tumblr. So like, it's a fundraising company that then sells coffee beans and then also personalizing gray tumblers.
Love coffee.
Awesome. We'll keep them.
You got your first sip.
That's right.
All right. Any other questions from short?
Great, please. I appreciate the support you all always give us. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Have a good evening.
Better run.
All right. Our third presentation this evening is Presentation of Special Education Program Review by Mrs. Benavides.
Hi. Good evening. Oh, no. Hey, welcome to the evening. I know it's getting kind of stormy outside, so I'm going to start off by giving a State of the Union, so to speak, for special education. I'm going to apologize in advance for using all the acronyms. If you don't know what it is, just please stop me and we'll go through it. But this is kind of our overview for the evening. We're going to talk about the Individuals with Disabilities Act, what that means, Alamo Heights, where we're at as far as special education, the programming that we provide, our DEA audit that we have this year, our special education trends and enrollment, and then we'll open it up for a Q and A. So what is IDEA? IDEA, or the Individuals with Disabilities Act, covers four distinct areas. It is the federal law that was developed in 1975 to ensure that all students with disabilities and their families are protected, that their rights are protected, that students are ensured what we call FAE, or Free and Appropriate Public Education, that educators and families have the resources that they need so that we can provide services for students and that students have access to another acronym, LRE, or the Least Restrictive Environment, which is access with their general education peers. So what does that look like in Alamo Heights? This is our continuum of special education services. As you notice in the triangle, all of the layers have access to the general education setting, and we're really proud of all the inclusion that we do have within Alamo Heights. But as the triangle narrows, the services become more specialized for the students and so does the least restrictive environment. Their environment becomes more restrictive in terms of access to students who are served through general education alone. So supports and services that we do provide, I'm just going to touch base on one of them on the slides. And the reason I'm doing that, I'll explain it in kind of importance and as we go through the slideshow, how it impacts that. Co-teach and in-class support is a service that we provide that is a special education staff member within the general education setting. So the students are getting specially designed instruction by either a paraprofessional or a special education teacher in that setting. This is a list of more restrictive placements, and the one I want you to pay attention to is our ACE Classroom, or Alternate Classroom for Education. And this is a classroom or a service for students with emotional issues or behavioral challenges within the general education setting. And this support, again, is done by special education staff, and it can be in a special education classroom or the general education setting, but this is an area of growth in our district. When we look at this slide, I want to again point to ECSI, Early Chartered Special Education. And in this program, we've also seen lots of growth. This is a program for three, four, and five-year-olds, where three-year-olds come half-days, and four- and five-year-olds come full-time. And this is usually a pull-out service, but there is also some... What's the word I'm looking for? In-class support as well. When we talk about related service, this is a list of most of the special education-related services that we offer. It's everything from speech therapy to transportation, counseling, OTPT, and so on. Of importance is speech therapy. This is, again, a disability that many of our students qualify for, and we provide lots of services in this area. Now, all of these services and supports are monitored by DEA. DEA now has a cyclical review audit they do with all schools within Texas, and it's a five-year cycle, and there's nine separate sections to include dyslexia and student audit of R. files. It's important to note that dyslexia now falls under special education, and I'm going to talk about that a little bit more. But this audit also included policy, procedures, and stakeholder feedback. The highlights from the cyclical review or DEA's findings. At least I think I gave you the wrong presentation.
Oh, no.
It looks different. I know.
That's okay. And I may have pulled up your previous one. I apologize.
That's okay. So here are some of our glows, and then the next slide will be our grows. But dyslexia was absolutely one of our gold stars. They did an audit of early intervention, identification, and parent notification. We did outstanding. The others were child find, evaluation, and FAE. And child find is just seeking out children who qualify for special education services within our district, whether they're coming to Alamo Heights or homeschool or at private space. Areas of growth, we're in the area of IEP development, and it's basically an impact statement on how a student's disability impacts their involvement in progress in the general ed curriculum. And we weren't as clear as we should have been, and so I'll touch base back on that and how we're going to work through that. The other grow was property constituted arts. There were arts that we had that did not have career and tech representation, and we need to do a better job of that. Part of it was not knowing that speech is considered a career and tech course, and so we need that staff member at those arts. So we're working on a corrective action plan. As far as trends and enrollment goes, we took five years' worth of October snapshot data and put it into where and how we compared with the state on the far right. And as you can see, historically, Alamo Heights has been below the state average for representation in special education. We have a 2022-23 snapshot date, but we also have current numbers. And currently, with our numbers growing, and I want to say we're at about 620, and that changes on a daily, hourly basis sometimes, we're at 13%, which is a percentage and a half over the 11.7% that the state was at the year before.
Yeah. We're going to pause real quick. There's a...
Well, it's a... This one's a flash flood.
Yeah, it's a flash flood.
Okay. It's a flash flood.
It does look like a tornado outside, just saying.
Yeah. There is a tornado alert right now, but I think that just means that conditions are good for tornado form. It doesn't mean they've seen one, right?
There hasn't been a sighting. I've confirmed it's just like a tornado launch. We need to be aware and keep our ears open.
I need to confirm that with City of Alamo Heights.
Okay. Well, please continue to monitor, if you would, throughout the meetings. We'll resume. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Just letting you know, you need me this time.
We're fine. Just talking.
Why are you pointing at me?
If their eyes get really big, just run.
Yeah. Run this way.
There is a place we will go. Wait for instructions. If there's a tornado, I'll direct everyone where to go to take shelter in the interior of the building.
We trust you, Frank.
Try to...
Not this building.
My kids are the ones...
Yes, this is silly. We're not going to leave.
We're going down to the crawl space, folks.
Okay. Please, I'm sorry. Thank you. Let's continue.
It's all good.
While you're on that page, can I just interject? So what do we attribute the increase in enrollment to? Are people seeking out our district because we have a good reputation?
Yes, that is one of the factors. And as I go through my slide presentation, I'm going to show you where the bulk of the increase is. And as I mentioned last time, I truly believe it's younger families coming in through Howard because that's where our biggest growth is. So this next slide kind of tells you, again, it's the snapshot dates in October, but these are the actual numbers. So five years ago, at Howard, we were at 74 kids. As of early August, early April, we're at 133 kids. If you look at the top row, where the campus is labeled underneath, you'll see the increase between the five years. So there has been an 80% increase in the number of students who qualify for special education at Howard, 114% increase. And then 50 at Cambridge. And overall, for the district, we've increased at 51%.
So in those numbers, can you explain, they changed the dyslexia rule?
Yes.
So previously, dyslexia was not in special education. And so now it is. And so what percentage of those numbers would you say? Is that the next slide?
Yeah. Good job.
It's going there. It's not the next one, but close. So I wanted you to be able to see the percentage of students in each grade level. And to your question, Lisa, as you can see, our EE, or Early Elementary, those are usually our three- and four-year-olds are at 9% as are our first graders and our third graders. So the increase has been in our early elementary numbers, and of course, second grade is not far behind. Now, to your question, Clay, about dyslexia, I was curious as well. How does dyslexia play into this? Not by much. Let me explain the numbers. So LD means learning disability. Now that a student qualifies for dyslexia through special education, they go under that eligibility criteria. So the numbers for dyslexia, as you can see under Cambridge, there are four. That goes into the LD calculation of 10. So the other students that... There's four that qualify for dyslexia, and there are others that may qualify for math calculation, written expression, listening comprehension, that all fall under the category of learning disabled.
So the slide before, you said Howard had 133.
So this is just this year that qualified this year. These are new kids. So Howard has a total number of 133 kiddos that have qualified this year, including in previous years.
But isn't it a one-year school?
They have this pre-K.
You're counting the pre-kinder?
Yes.
Well, now I get it.
Do you have any questions on this slide? So to date, these are the numbers of... So to date, these are the numbers of kids qualifying for dyslexia or special ed. They're in purple up at the top. As you can see, it's concentrated at Howard with the seventy-seven kids qualifying at Howard, yes, ma'am.
So newly qualified and dyslexia. So let's take Cambridge there, for example, four dyslexia. Does that mean four newly qualified dyslexia? Or does that mean four dyslexia total in the whole entire school?
No, four newly qualified so far this year.
In, in, okay, got it, in dyslexia. Okay, got it.
These are just this year's numbers. And they're still climbing as we even go into summer testing.
So, sorry. So if they, if they were at Howard the year, are these like people that, what I'm trying to figure out is Cambridge and Woodbridge, we've got twenty-sixth and third. Were they at Howard the year before? Or at some point? I mean.
They could have been, but this is when they were tested and qualified. Was when they were currently a Cambridge student or currently a Woodbridge student.
Yeah, my question is, is did someone go from kinder to first to second? And they weren't qualified and then at four they were?
Yes, very close.
Okay.
Okay, the next slide is the number of students again currently twenty-two, twenty-three for our most restrictive settings. As you can see, the first group of numbers is for S S T or student support team kiddos. Howard, we have A, Cambridge eleven, and so forth this year. These numbers again will change next year as students transition from kinder to first or fifth through sixth and so forth. Where we've grown, and I mentioned ACE or our alternative classroom for education setting, where we serve students with behavioral and emotional difficulties. This is again where our numbers have increased. So our next step is based on all the information that I've given you. That include our audit findings, professional learning, and staffing levels. So for our T E A audit, we're addressing the C T E representation at arts. And we're working on writing our impact statements. Our professional learning is going to include additional training for general ed, admin, counselors, to ensure that we're providing the supports as well as ongoing supports for behavior. Our staffing levels, we're working on an independent workload staffing analysis, which we need to do a data dig dive into. And we want to ensure that we have adequate staffing across all levels and all programs.
On the behavior, do you attribute this growing problem? Like, we had some stuff coming out of the closing down of schools, the pandemic, all of that proceeding across society. Is this something that you think might be a blip or do you think it's rising?
I think it's rising all over the place. I talk to my fellow directors and they say the same things, increasing behaviors. And even though I talked about Alamo Heights historically being below the state average, I think we're going to be at the state average. And the state average is going to continue to increase for students qualifying for special education services.
And what do we attribute it to? Do we have some theories as to what's going on?
We have theories, especially for our growing number of speech students. At the early ages, people were wearing masks two and three years ago. They didn't get to see how people formed, right, to be able to speak appropriately. I think there's just a heightened level of anxiety for many different reasons across the board. And so we're seeing these behavior problems. But students are also, we can attribute it. There's not real studies out there to solidify any of my educated guesses. But it's a combination of things. Lots of stresses in today's society. It's hard to be a kid, I think.
Yeah.
Oh, Melissa, I was just going to ask for next year, because you present on this every year, is that right? Or not, or only after the audits? You're like, no, I'm not doing that. No. How every, every, I'm not asking for every year. What, is there a certain period of time? Okay, all right. Well, next time you come to us, and it might be a few years then, I was just going to ask that you could cover, and maybe you know off the cuff, but, you know, during the art process, is it a hundred percent of our parents who conclude the art process with our district and agree with the conclusion of the I E P? Or are we ever concluding arts where the parents disagree? Because I know it's so formalized. I'm not going to pretend to know all the ins and outs. But I know at the conclusion, parents can either say, yes, I agree with my I E P or I don't. Are we getting a hundred percent agreement or are there some parents that disagree?
There's about a five percent disagreement, but we have the opportunity to come back. And so we try to gather more information to either solidify what we'd like to do and the parent will do the same. And we normally, this year and the past three years since I've been here, we've been able to come to compromises. So we're at a hundred percent.
We are at a hundred percent. That's great.
Doesn't it initially start off that way?
Right. I'd love in the future presentations, just to add one slide on that result. You know, we're getting ninety-five percent agreement at this stage. And then after the, there's like a facilitated process or whatnot, then we're getting a hundred percent. Or if we, by the next time you have some that weren't, I would just nice to, that'd be a nice stat to also see on our district. It sounds like you guys are doing a great job getting everyone on board. So that's great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Awesome. Thank you so much. Really appreciate the time.
Thank you.
We just kept going and turning the whole service.
Hey, Sean, before you leave, thank you as always. Just want to recognize you. Appreciate you being here.
Sean's our food service director. Sean, she gets you on that.
Food service director. Yeah, Frank's monitoring it. We need to switch through a couple of things at least. So, okay, next, we're going to move into a report on board member continuing education requirement. I'm having to report that all trustees have received their final, we've received our final trustee report for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three season. All trustees completed their training and exceeded the requirements for current board members. No trustees are deficient, at least not when it comes to board training. All right. Next, we're going to move into a presentation on district target area update. Teacher incentive allotment, Dr. Jimmy Walker. And am I yelling? Okay, Dr. Walker.
We're projecting well.
It's over the range.
Hey, I like Melissa standing up. It kind of keeps things moving.
Go for it. Whenever you're comfortable.
So we've talked through teacher incentive allotment last week. And and it needs to be turned on. Thank you, Melissa. So I just want you to know, this is step one in a multi-series about teacher incentive allotment. Today's going to be a quick overview. In June, I'll come back and we'll talk about our plan to evaluate student growth. In the fall, I'll come back and talk through the exact application process. And then in the spring, once we do have a more complete process, I'll come and share all that and our implementation milestones. So this is not the only time we'll be talking about this. Beginning, you guys, we've looked at all of this data before. About twelve percent of teachers retire, or we had a, twelve percent left the profession. And we had eight thousand six hundred teachers who retired. This is a problem not just in Texas, but across the nation. There's been research on who is retiring, females more likely than males. Specialty areas, special education, like Melissa just spoke about. What one thing that has turned out to be successful is merit aid programs when they're well implemented. We've looked at this. This is a slide directly from January's taper. Although this is a national problem, it has hit home in Alamo Heights as we look at our turnover rate for the past several years. As I talk about teacher incentive allotment, it is one strategy to recruit and retain excellent talent here in Alamo Heights. We're also looking at strategies to ensure our teachers have added the planning time, that we're reducing the administrative tasks so that time and energy can go into the classroom, and looking at multiple things to support teacher compensation and benefits. So teacher incentive allotment was originated in twenty nineteen out of House Bill three. It's an option. Districts don't have to do this. But when you create these designations, it does augment teachers' salaries. It's a two-step problem to, two-step process to get plans implemented. First step being approval through T E A. Second step is just a data analysis that you're collecting information and growth in a responsible, valid, and reliable way. Teacher incentive allotment is required to have two components. One is the, it has to include teacher evaluations. And I'm going to talk through exactly what that looks like. And it has to include student performance, how much students are growing over the course of a year. This is the amount of funding allocated through the legislation. Note that if you are on a campus with more need, there is more funding. Because across the state of Texas, they're trying to attract teachers into districts that are harder to staff, higher communities in poverty and in rural areas. In Alamo Heights, this is what it would look like for us. So if a teacher receives the designation of a recognized teacher, it's about a thirty-five-hundred-dollar stipend for five years. If they receive the designation of exemplary, it's about a seven-thousand-dollar stipend for five years. And if they receive that master level, it's about fourteen-thousand dollars a year. It's a little different on each campus, depending on the percentage of students identified as free and reduced lunch.
Just a quick question. Can you go back to the slide before? So, so a teacher at Howard with a master's is paid more than a high school teacher than the allotment? I mean, I know it's state-driven. I'm just curious why.
It's the percentage of students identified as free and reduced at that campus. So that's why. We have slightly different percentages across the campuses. So the first thing that was required is it's based on your annual evaluation. This is an administrator going into the classroom, watching a lesson, start to finish, and then scoring that teacher based on a very prescriptive rubric. On T tests, it looks at domain two, instruction, domain three, learning environment. And the ratings, if you're scored a three, it's a proficient. Four is accomplished, five is the highest distinguished. If your average of those two domains is a three-point-seven, that would put a teacher at the recognized level. If your average of those two domains is a four-point-five, that's exemplary. The percentage of students who meet or exceed the growth target, you can see that if fifty-five to fifty-nine percent of your students meet a year's worth of growth in a year's time, that's recognized. You have seventy percent or more, that puts you at masters. I like this because it's rigorous, but yet reasonable. Every year, you're going to have some kiddos in your room that are just trying to keep their notebook warm. Like, things are going on. And this says if you can get seventy percent, a year's worth of growth, that qualifies a teacher for masters level. Now, you have to have both criteria. So if your evaluation was recognized and your student achievement was at, growth was at seventy percent, the highest designation would be a recognized. In Alamo Heights, I have a committee that's working on this, and they feel very strongly, and I concur, that we need to create a plan for every teacher who would be eligible. So this includes J R O T C, P E, music, choir teachers, everything. What it does not include are professional staff members who do not have a teaching responsibility, direct teaching responsibility with students, such as administrators and evaluators. Of note, yeah.
Quick question. Could we game the system by, let's say you taught one class, and then could you qualify for the stipend? If a T, if a, if a.
Sure. Anyone that was coded an oh-eight-seven would be eligible for teacher incentive allotment.
The question would be, is that a good idea?
Is that, yeah. Is that a good idea? But, but the technical answer is yes. Additional details, the designations for five years, there is hold harmless. So if you're a master teacher, the next year your evaluation declines, you maintain that designation for five years. But if you were an exemplary teacher and the next year it goes up, you can improve. But you can't decline over that five years. The question came up, can an individual teacher just opt out? The answer is no. If we build a plan for fourth grade, we have to submit our data for every fourth grade student. You can't submit and get a plan approved just with a sampling of students or a few. But the entire fourth grade could say, we don't want to do this. Of note, to date, after thirty-five meetings, no one's opting out.
Of course not.
So timeline, we are right here, pre-application. We're giving ourselves a long runway to work through all of these details. The first payout would actually occur in September twenty-twenty-six. Other districts that have rushed this, it's been because they stood up what was easiest, and that would be star. And we're looking at something that's more reflective of what we value in terms of student growth.
And that has been the agreement of all of our staff, all of our educators.
Hundred percent, a hundred percent. We're about the whole student. We're about the whole staff. We've talked about this with District Educational Advisory Committee. The feedback from them was positive ways about just looking into how can we get creative with staff compensation, positive feedback about the approach for all staff, wonderings about communication with parents, and wondering about long-term sustainability of funding, which likewise we're wondering about. And then wondering about, to your point, Ryan, how can we support non-teaching faculty roles? All of those are very good questions that we have not fully worked through. So, y'all, that's a lot of work. Is it worth it? So definitely a benefit to teacher incentivizing them, come work here, stay here. There's a benefit to Alamo Heights because as other districts do take on teacher incentive allotment, it benefits us if we have this as well. It benefits instruction because through this process, we're creating these common pre-assessments and common post-assessments that'll help teachers plan together and collaborate. And it's going to benefit all students because across the district, from pre-K, music, fourth grade, A P world history, we're all focused on student growth. That's good for kids. Because that's talking about growth for high-achieving students, students who are on track and students who are struggling. I like this program because it really does say everyone should be making a year's worth of growth and a year's worth of time. And it supports students, teachers, in figuring out if their kids are doing that. And if they're not, working together to figure out how. That's it. Yes, for sure.
So the way the state funding works, they don't put any caps or any type of curve on this, right? I mean, if theoretically, every single Alamo Heights teacher is masters, we get that much chunk of change to pay every single teacher a masters bonus. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
It's a very valid question.
There's no competition, these are the, you know, the teachers, because each of, everybody can get the qualification.
It's not like the top ten percent get into university direct on automatic admission.
We're not doing nothing. Okay. Thank you.
Not that.
Thank you.
Now, if we'd taken a teacher from another district to receive the certification, and their certification is, say, based on star, different standards, I suppose that doesn't matter and they can still come over.
No, the designation goes with them for five years.
And there's current funding for how much? Isn't that part of the issue?
They guaranteed, once we stand it up and a teacher receives a designation for five years. After that, it would depend on legislative allocations.
So it's interesting from a budgeting standpoint, because they have no idea how many people are going to, how many teachers statewide are going to qualify these different levels. So how, do they know how much money to put in that?
They have a.
I mean, okay.
That was pretty cynical there.
Well, I didn't mean it was cynical. I'm just saying, it's just like.
David?
So I want to echo Lisa's comment. Like, I feel like it's incredibly important for us to go after this, but it's like eyes wide open. Like, the funding may drive in two years, they may ding chapter forty-nine schools like us and say, you're getting the master stuff over here, so we're taking something away from you over here. So like, yeah, there could be a whole.
We've been very transparent with staff. I'm being very transparent with you about this is not funded in perpetuity. Like, this is.
Let's go for it.
Yeah.
Possibly thirty-seven-hundred dollars extra that they didn't have before. And even if it's one year, that's a gift, right?
Yeah, that's exactly right. I mean, it's a, it's a great thing. And it makes, I mean, I remember Mike Marath talking about this years ago, about we need to, you know, incentivize teachers by their performance. And so I think it's a great idea. I'm anxious to see that it won't. I mean, I'm anxious to see that they have the funds.
It's.
Yeah.
Clay? So I read about this maybe a year and a half ago. And I don't, maybe I said something to somebody, but I thought it was really important because it was there. But at the time, we were coming out of COVID and blah, blah, blah. And I feel like we have three horses that kind of run a lot of stuff out of here. And my question is, is like, okay, you mentioned, I wrote down some things that you. And my question is, is like, okay, you mentioned, I wrote down some things that you mentioned. 35 meetings, evaluations, okay? So who's doing all this? And is it just you, and is it 10% of your time? Is it 30% of your time? My question is more like, you know.
Are you stressed out about this?
Or is this, do we like need a staff member to just do this? I don't know how long it takes.
Well, and I'm just going to remind us real quick and set it up. You know, last June, we set the goals for the district. And remember, they set those goals with an understanding that was going to be 100% capacity. So this was absolutely one of those goals, not to steal your thunder, but.
Yes, and I'll also say I'm incredibly grateful to work here. I have 100 teachers helping me this summer get this off the ground.
Okay, so it's 101.
So I have teachers who are going to training for different things. How do we set local norms? I have a group doing that. I have groups writing pre-assessments, like it's, I am not doing this. I'm coordinating, but I've got.
That was my question.
Very smart people.
And by the way, I think you called us horses.
Okay, any other questions for Dr. Walker?
I'll be back in June with more information.
Thank you. We're going to move into Section C, subsection C, Section 4. Consideration of a resolution in support of Texas public schools as the most effective means of empowering students and instilling civic pride for the betterment of the great state of Texas. Okay. So everyone, we have a resolution in our folder. One, to save my voice, but two, because I believe it's important to show everyone that all seven of us are behind this. I would ask that we each take turns reading a portion of the resolution tonight. And then we will move and vote on it afterwards. And before we get there, I do want to thank, one, David and Carrie first for starting this off as our legislative committee kicking it off. Stacy also for putting her eyes and words on it, but then also everyone else taking time to look at it and, you know, wholeheartedly, absolutely support this. So whereas Alamo Heights ISD believes in agreement with the Constitution of the State of Texas that the general diffusion of knowledge is essential to the preservation of the liberties and the rights of the people.
Whereas Alamo Heights ISD recognizes the state of Texas constitutional duty to establish and make suitable provision for the support and maintenance of an efficient system of public free schools.
Whereas Alamo Heights ISD believes that the public school system, fully funded and appropriately overseen and accounted for by the state of Texas, remains the most influential avenue of delivering strong student outcomes and of instilling civic pride in our communities and our children for our democratic and republican forms of government.
Whereas Alamo Heights ISD resolutely believes in these principles of civic pride, local government, and control and self-determination.
Whereas Texas public schools, like Alamo Heights ISD and unlike other forms of schooling, value and accept every student and are subject to academic and financial accountability by the state of Texas.
Whereas Alamo Heights Independent School District understands that the state of Texas wishes to improve educational outcomes in Texas by considering the use of vouchers, education savings accounts, and other, and/or other mechanisms.
Whereas Alamo Heights ISD understands that any such mechanism necessarily would use taxpayer funds to fund school systems, including private school systems, that are not subject to state accountability.
Whereas the state of Texas already underfunds Texas public schools, and to make up for the shortfall, recaptures at least $4 billion per year from certain school districts like Alamo Heights ISD.
Whereas given the recapture system, any adoption of vouchers or educational savings accounts undoubtedly will be funded directly or indirectly through recapture, imposing yet another undisclosed financial burden on Alamo Heights ISD taxpayers that does not directly benefit Alamo Heights ISD schools.
Whereas if any Texas public school is not creating positive educational outcomes for students, it remains the responsibility of the state of Texas to fully fund and to fully account for the performance of that specific school.
Whereas taking dollars meant to fund Texas public schools and redirecting them to fund other forms of schooling misleads taxpayers as to the use of taxpayer money, reduces transparency, and reduces accountability of the use of the public funds.
Whereas private schools choose their own students, are not required to meet the same academic standards as public schools, and are not required to report test results, graduation rates, or other performance measures to the public.
Whereas depriving any Texas public school of funding is not the solution to improving that school's performance on behalf of its students. Indeed, it makes the situation worse for the students. Left behind, it creates a self-destructive spiral.
Whereas, as in Alamo Heights ISD, the solution to improving public school performance is community-based accountability, direct interaction between taxpayers and their elected school officials, the transparent operation of school systems and campuses, less state-imposed bureaucracy and regulation, adequate funding from the state of Texas, and better attraction and retention of staff through local control and self-determination.
Now therefore, be it resolved that the Alamo Heights ISD Board of Trustees calls on the Texas Legislature to fully fund and account for Texas public schools to adopt physically responsible policies that encourage local control and self-determination to minimize regulatory and bureaucratic burden on Texas public schools, to encourage transparency in the operation of schools, and to reject any diversion of public dollars away from Texas public schools to private entities in any form. Do I have a motion to approve the consideration of a resolution in support of Texas public schools as the most effective means of empowering students and instilling civic pride for the betterment of the great state of Texas? Thank you, Ryan. Do I have a second? Thank you, Carrie. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 I thought you were going to say, do I have an amen?
We'll have an official comment.
I like the way you got the whole circle to go around. You are the alpha and the omega.
You heard it there first, folks. All right, we're going to move into Section 5, Consent Agenda. These are items that are considered routine by the Board and previously reviewed and discussed in prior meetings, and that we therefore enact as one motion. Please take a second and look at the agenda, and let me know if there's anything that any member would like to remove from the consent agenda and place on the regular agenda. As always, as y'all look over it, always want to recognize the generosity of our community and note that we received $112,249.68 donations this last month. Thank you all, Alamo Heights. All right, I see no ayes. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sure.
Thank you, Lisa. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Stacy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, any opposed? There are none. Motion carries. Section 6, Board Member Committee Reports. We're going to start tonight with Ryan. Tell us about the Alamo Heights School Foundation's meeting this week.
Meeting was yesterday, right here in this room. Good meeting. We had a little bit of a bond discussion. Brooke Mevin kind of discussed the, you know, mailouts that we're doing. One thing that she pointed out, I think is interesting, kind of have on your radar, is there are a lot of these, you know, no Prop A or anti-Prop A signs. And they're blue and yellow, and they can be mistaken for our Prop A. And under the law, you have to, you have Prop as part of your bond package. But that has to do with the city of San Antonio and the policing and other issues that have nothing to do with us. So you may need to clarify. And Brooke said that they were getting out a mailer, and they're also putting out some video, trying to, you know, educate.
So we had a lot of talk about that tonight, a lot of.
It's failing.
And, yeah, so, I mean, that was, that was really good. We also.
It is, and I'm not under the tree. I'm sorry.
No, no problem. Endowment is going well. They're still have great momentum going. They haven't even really officially opened it up. They're still having quiet meetings. And they're going to make the budget even, or the kind of aspirational amount, pretty easily, they're thinking. Teachers Fund is picking up momentum, but it's a little bit slow going. They think that that's perhaps somewhat attributable to the endowment doing so well and Greater Heights Night also, you know, they blew the roof. But they're picking up, and they've got, keep your eyes out for Heights Huddles. If either one hosts or attends them, they've been really good. The new president for next year is going to be Ann Valentine. So she will take over next meeting. And the last thing is, they're already starting Greater Heights Night. And they've already got sponsorships throughout. I think they said they've already got 130,000, maybe 150,000 in sponsorships already. Their goal is to actually crack the 1 million mark, and I think they're going to do it. The foundation, as usual, is great.
Great, all right, thank you.
We're grateful for it.
Next, we move in the Building Committee. David met on April 12.
Oh, right, we had a.
I'm going to move my car under a tree. I buy the mailbox.
Wait, did you like to?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to suspend for five minutes.
It's like that scene in a movie, a world touring the dark, where he's looking at the house, and this plane kind of comes in and just smashes into the house. He turns to his wife and goes, we'll take it. It's like, are you crazy? What are you, how did that ever happen again?
That's my favorite.
Hey, can I give you my keys?
David Jackson at the airport, and they sit on the plane. So it was, it was a good turnout.
Was it?
Yes, but, I mean, I will tell you at first. Thank you, I always leave. All right.
Well, I did, because I really didn't figure anybody could go anywhere. So it's like, well, we're here, let's have a meeting. I didn't expect a success.
They're very worried about the cars and the trees.
They are. It's a valuable asset.
I think it's because of the San Antonio Zoo happened, the tree.
Yeah.
My cousin actually was a master arbitrator, and he's actually was the only one in San Antonio that was able to go to the San Antonio Zoo and evaluate the trees.
I think he, yeah, but I'm going to do the same thing. I told Melissa to give me a, she's driving. You're done with me, I'm going to take that one. Yeah, for sure.
Man, I'm speeding my car.
Oh, yeah.
That'll be the last time.
Likes and tells.
It's good.
Pass the tails. Yeah.
Ryan, you brought a lot of drama to your last.
I know, this is kind of, I think it's a sign.
I think you called Brian the Alpha and the Omega.
That was pretty good. You got it. That was pretty good.
I wasn't close enough for it.
I'm tossing that one.
I paid a lot for that one.
You can go home to Hillary in seconds. Look at it. Of course, man, it's Alpha. And they'll laugh at you.
It's like an avenger. So we leave there, but.
Yeah, right, they're gone.
Am I coming back? Ryan's just lying, you're not mentally.
I think Lisa's lying out there on the ground. I think she got hit.
It's good. I mean, I'm sorry, I'm hungry.
You feel better?
A little better. I mean, I was in red belt locks.
My kids are freaking out at home. David Jackson sitting on the airplane, trying to get out of here.
I said they got food, I mean.
Sorry, is that, am I not, am I, I'm supposed to go in here? I'm on camera now. Is it still hailing?
Yeah.
It is?
Not at all. I'm freezing now. Because I got wet. No, I'm fine. Just because I got wet outside. I was cold earlier. Wait, wait, great, permanently?
Play page.
He said he liked the name, like, I mean, to me, like, the Air Force Academy.
Hey, Ryan, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Because you should have seen, it was like red carpet.
Okay, I'm going to resume us back into meeting at 8:43, if that matters. Starting with the Building Committee Report. 7:23, thank you from David.
43.
7:43, yeah. A brief, we had a very brief meeting after the GNP meeting, just to discuss the efficient use of the real estate that we have. So it's pretty brief. There you go. All right, District Design Team, Stacy from March 24?
Yes, we had a great meeting led by Frank Alfaro. And the different groups are working through, or are continuing to work through system capacity, analyzing different standards for what our district's capacity is. For example, in our group here that has a Dr. Vasira, we were talking about stability in leadership and whether our district provides for that. And something that came up is the idea of leadership succession plans, which our district doesn't currently have, but is there some kind of formalized way we can, can either, you know, have a succession plan? Another example is having good job descriptions, which we do currently have thanks to our wonderful HR director, Frank Stine. But just looking at different aspects of our system and our administration, and how do we provide for stability and leadership? Or another one we had was training and development. What kind of structures do we have in place that increase or provide better capacity? So it's some good stuff that I feel like, I like that Frank has us slowing down and looking at the big picture of our system and not just dealing with the moment-to-moment questions or issues that arise. It's a good exercise to have the leaders of the district there together talking about it. So that's all I have.
Awesome, thank you. Last, District Education Advisory Committee, Carrie from Wednesday, April 12.
Sure, and my brain is kind of, I don't know, I'm over it a little bit, but I have.
Yeah, Alfaro, call back on it, can you be?
Yeah, and Jimmy, yeah, we met here. And the first, we started off with a presentation of the bond, which was always great. And then we talked about, it was the annual wellness goals, mainly around the SHAC review and nutrition promotion and education and physical activity for both staff and children, students. And then we talked about our technology subcommittee that I sat on with Brian and a group of teachers and parents. And Brian presented to us our guidelines draft that will kind of massage. Everybody, it was really great feedback. Everybody had, you know, good, lots of things to say. Everybody was listening and taking good notes. And so what we'll do now is massage it, Brian's going to, correct me if I'm wrong, and present it to some groups of the schools. Okay, and then some other groups, and then kind of massage it some more, and then present it to us, see if we're okay and on board with it. Is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, sorry, my brain's so wonderful. And then the last was Jimmy presented. Learning walk at Howard on May tenth as well, senior awards on May fifteenth. We're excited to host it from Mule Dome, Vaschera, for the first time. May seventeenth, the school board, the, I'm sorry, foundation board meeting, Ryan will not represent us.
No, you'll still be there.
May seventeen.
May seventeen.
May eighteen. He's not gone till the eighteen.
Oh, the eighteen is the regular warning, that's right.
I'm not going to let you down.
Yeah, and you didn't mention our, our.
You're dedicated, Ryan.
I'm going to give you about fifteen minutes on you.
Everybody can.
Oh, why did you do that?
All right, Thursday, May eighteenth is our regular board meeting, so.
I expect you to hand me a soccer paddle.
Whatever you want. Section nine, superintendents communication.
Okay, so Alicia has just a little picture collage to highlight the celebrations in April, looking back from when we last met. Her celebration is a very successful job there, one that we had face-to-face in the Mule Dome, we used the Sky Gym. Frank Stanich did an incredible job pulling in applicants, visiting with applicants. Each of our campuses had a booth to visit and start that recruitment process. This is the season of concerts, y'all. We had the piano concert this week, we had percussion concert this week. A handful of you were able to be with us at the Strings Festival, where we celebrated fifty years of our Strings program in the Mule Dome. It was an incredible night of celebration there. First time that we hosted it in the Mule Dome here in the district and not traveling out to northeast of Blossom, and so great celebration. Family art night is taking place tonight at Cambridge. Wonder how they're doing with all this lovely weather they're experiencing. Our fashion design, class one, two, and three hosted their annual fashion show, so you can see one of our students walking the runway. They hosted that in the Mule Dome over lunch on Monday. Lots of students attended, great community celebration. We sent our Science Olympiad students from both the junior school and the high school off today with a, with a full-on send-off with the band and the percussion line, and our student scientist walked through and loaded the bus. Mr. Malaski was very excited about that, and then we did the same thing at the junior school. So they're traveling to Texas A&amp;M, and I'm sure we're going to bring back some great awards. Nice. And then just some quick athletic highlights, y'all. Track ended, earned the district championship last week, and just yesterday, the boys placed first as area finalists, and the girls' team placed second, and that's a big deal for us. The number of students that our coaches have encouraged to participate in track this year is a record number. We're seeing seniors participate, you know, typically in the spring of senior year, we get our athletes kind of, you know, take some time, let them rest a little bit, and that's not what we're seeing. Again, when I spoke to the head coaches this morning, I just think that's a real testament to some of the, the big vision work that, that Coach Riddeman has done about multi-sports athletes, but there's just incredible buy-in across the entire coaching staff, so very excited about that. Girls' golf is headed to state. It's almost like we take it for granted, you know, that's a huge accomplishment, and so, yeah.
And it's two teams.
Yeah, two teams again going. And then our softball program, celebrating the most wins in a season since two thousand eight. And there, this is also the first time to earn the title of district champion since two thousand eight. So they're headed to playoffs for the second time since two thousand eleven. That's really exciting. If you haven't gotten to see one of their games, it's just fun to see those girls in action. Baseball is undefeated at district play and is currently sitting in first place as well, so lots of athletic highlights to celebrate too. And so just some quick updates. Alicia, if you clicked to the next slide, we are just, I think I have bond, staffing, safety and security. And so tomorrow actually is my final scheduled community presentation. I think at this point, it's over twenty-two presentations that we've engaged in as far as just different community groups, all of our PTOs. I met with the governor's club, I'm meeting with Canopus tomorrow, I met with Rotary, and so many of you have been along for the ride. Brian especially has been part of most of those, and we've done a lot of communication. And so that feels good. Carrie had a presentation that was happening right before coming to them, so appreciating you presenting to a group as well. This is a team effort, and I feel like we've, we've worked hard to get the word out around this. Early voting begins on Monday, and election day is May sixth. Staffing, this is a very busy season for us in HR, working with our principals to recommend positions to be hired, to, to hire. And then just a quick safety and security update. We're excited to announce that we have made a recommendation for hiring for our third SRO position, and so tell us that person's name, because I don't have it in my notes.
Her name is.
Well. Help me out here. The new one?
Yeah.
Tussis, right?
Well, we haven't, we don't have a confirmation yet, so.
Oh, that's not good.
I'm sure that out yet. I haven't heard back. Remember, there are several steps to the.
I know, but I thought she was starting training.
I, no, so I have not got confirmation back from our, our.
Got it.
I'm not saying.
It's going to happen, everybody right now. Excited to have a good candidate for this, and so a good match for the junior school, so to be continued for official announcement. Anything else, safety and security, Frank?
Not for open.
Got it.
All right, that concludes our agenda, so before we move into our next item.
One thing.
Maybe, sure.